All right, welcome everyone to the Town Council Meeting. Call the mean to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Tonight, Mr. Ricketts will be here giving an invocation, and he is the Director of Men's Ministries at North Chapel here in Fountain Hills. Welcome, Mr. Ricketts.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Almighty God, we come to you this evening in great humility and praise because you are the sovereign God of the universe. We love you as you have loved us so much, and we seek your will as we desire to love others as we love ourselves. We confess our sins and ask that you would forgive us this day. We will not regard iniquity in our heart as we desire that you would hear our prayers this evening. We thank you this evening for these faithful servants that are here to serve this community. We are thankful for this community, this state, and this country, and the freedom that we all enjoy because of men and women who are willing to defend this country regardless of the cost. We thank you for the blessings showered upon this nation and the freedoms to worship as we individually believe. Tonight, we pray you will give this council the insight and wisdom required to make the decisions before them. Let your will and freedom be reflected in thought and words this evening. You have given us a spirit not of fear but of power, love, and sound thinking; for that we are most thankful. God bless America and this community of Fountain Hills. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ricketts. Roll call, please, Deb.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Thank you very much. The mayor's report, I just have one thing to mention. Celebrating a birthday up here in the next couple of, maybe a little more than a week, our newest council member, Councilmember Elke, birthday on the 11th of this month. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You betcha. We'll hold off on the song.
Where's my present?
Maybe for the actual celebration. It seems to draw up the frequency on Channel 11 when we sing it, so. All right, first thing, as far as the public appearances and announcements, we've got a proclamation here called Play Day Proclamation, and it's appropriate because Fountain Hills has been, I don't know if Brian or Mark are here, I'm not sure of the exact title of what we've been awarded, but Fountain Hills, I believe, was awarded Play Town USA, Most Playful Town, I think, in the universe, maybe one of the top play places in the, at least in the country, is what I believe it was. So that was great, great recognition of all the activities we have available for youth and adults in Fountain Hills, from our parks to trails and everything in between. So congratulations to staff for having great facilities and for you folks for using them. So I'm here reading the Play Day Proclamation. In order to proclaim September 18th, 2010, Play Day in the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, where play is crucial factor in the overall well-being of children, and whereas play spaces and playgrounds within walking distances of children's homes are missing from many communities and neighborhoods, and whereas unstructured, unplanned, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on a decline, and whereas fewer children spend time outside of, at parks and playgrounds, and whereas recess is being shortened or removed from school curriculums, and whereas children who play are healthier and suffer less obesity and BC-related health problems such as diabetes and heart disease, and whereas children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, whereas children who play learn the social skills that help them to become happy and well-adjusted adults, and whereas parents, schools, childcare centers, nonprofit organizations, businesses, churches, synagogues, mosques, and all interested parties wish to raise the community's children to become healthy, happy, and successful adults. Therefore, I, J. Schlum, Town Mayor, Fountain Hills, hereby proclaim September 18th, 2010, as Play Day. So take that seriously. We are a playful place. You can hear people playing in the audience right now. All right, now we have a bittersweet item, recognizing our awesome municipal court judge, Ted Armbruster, for his awesome service to our community, and we'll be presenting him with something here tonight to officially recognize him before our Town Council. But before that occurs, there's some folks that have served with him previously, and one I know was on the search team, and was very successful, obviously. But first, we'll have former council member and current state representative, John Kavanaugh, come forward to say a few words to or about Judge Armbruster. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity to say a few good words about our departing good judge. When word first came out many, many years ago that Judge Schub was leaving, it caused a great deal of concern on the Town Council and the whole town for two reasons. Number one, we knew that filling Judge Schub's shoes would be a big task because he had become almost an institution in the court. And secondly, the role of magistrate in town is one of an awesome responsibility, not to demean the council, which I was a member of, but if one councilman leaves, you still have, you know, six remaining, and business goes on. Not to demean the manager, but if the manager goes, you still have this massive support structure, so the town moves on. But the court is such a small operation, and although he does have people that help him, in the court, the judge is most of the court, so when the judge goes, you don't have a court anymore. And we were very pleased when we were confronted with that situation with Judge Schub, that we were able to conduct an extensive search. We found a lot of qualified candidates, but one candidate rose to the top, and that was Ted Armbruster, and he stayed there ever since. And it's a credit to him that he served here so well, and in a way, it's a credit to us that we picked the kind of person who was on the way up. We're losing Ted, but he's advancing his career. He's making a move upward. And if you're going to pick somebody, I always say, pick them on the way up, and that's what we did. And he'll be in Virginia, not too far from the Supreme Court, maybe his next stop. I meant to visit, you know, but. But Ted was more than a judge, you know, you go to a lot of cities and towns, and you know, the judge is up there, unapproachable in their robes, and you never see him again. But Ted was a part of the community, and he did a lot of good outside of just his judicial duties, especially with his youth court, you know, trying to bring up our children in a good way, and we appreciate that. Basically, Ted Armbruster was the right person at the right time, and he will be missed. And I'm sorry you're going, but best of luck to you.
Now we've got the honorary counsel of El Salvador, a former Town Council Member, Enrique Melendez. Thanks for coming. Thanks for being on the search team to find such a gem.
Thank you, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Brown, council members and staff. I'm here tonight upon the invitation of the town as a former member to honor my good friend, Ted Armbruster. But before I begin, I want to share a story with you. The years that I served on the council can be described with one word: turbulent. We had a division, we had friction, we had animosity with the council members because we were dealing with some issues of importance which today all of you enjoy. We came together and became a unit that developed issues like law enforcement. One of the best decisions that I've made was to have been part of the selection team to have the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office serve our community. But the reason I'm bringing this up is, and we also did the mountains, we brought back our credit rating, I was talking to Julie Getty with her help, to the level where we weren't on the watch list. We developed the mountains, we settled the lawsuit, brought back the fire district, and we had some other developments that I like to refer as the Morgan Shopping Center on Shea and the Miles Community Center. But what disappoints me is that some of you here have come to my home, have called me on the telephone, have met me on the street, and said to me, Rick, what advice can you give me so we can develop a better camaraderie in the council because there's division? There's been letters, emails that have been sent out, we know that, the community knows that, that have been full of hatred. That's not right. There's been emails that have been sent to selected members. That's not right. Everybody knows the division that you have and also involving the town manager. So I'm asking you, and I have a right to ask you, and I'm going to challenge you to come together, bring yourselves together, reach out to one another, get a grip, tighten your belt, and be cohesive to make this town what we should be. Then you're going to get the respect from the people. Eight years ago, Mayor, we learned sadly that Paul Norton, rest in peace, the best town manager that this council, this community will ever have, was ill, seriously ill, and we had to search for a new town manager, which we did, again, coming together. Shortly after that, in July of 2002, correct me, John, if I'm wrong, we learned that Judge Schub had decided to resign. So I was privileged, Mayor Byler put me on the search team, and together with my colleagues, we did a lot of work, a lot of research, and came a day in July, which was one of the best days that I've had since I've been I've served in the council, when the mayor said, Rick, you better call Ted Armbruster and tell him he's got the position. And I did. I got him when he was coming out of courthouse in Everett, Washington, and he said, Council Member, I'm really thrilled. I can't wait to get there, but I do have some issues with the court and some legal issues that I have to take care of. Typical professionalism. Mayor, I was very, very proud to, I made that call that evening, and I'm honored to have been able to work with Judge Armbruster. We became good friends, and the work that he has done in the court with the teen court and so forth, and with the staff of Pat and Don and I can't remember the other two, but great staff, without that staff, he couldn't have done it. And he became what we have today, the best judge that I think, again, this town will ever have. I'm honored to be his friend, and I'm honored to be here saluting him. Now I'm going to have a little fun. Shortly after we met, I noticed that his license plate had Nebraska on it, and my license plates, as you know, have USC. So we were rivals in football, and we used to go to each other's homes to watch the Nebraska-USC games, and we made an agreement, not a bet, an agreement, that if Nebraska beat USC, then I would have to bring him a bottle of wine, California Cabernet Sauvignon. But on the other hand, if USC beat Nebraska, then he would have to give me a box of Omaha Steaks. I have to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that I never had to give him a bottle of wine, and I really enjoy those steaks. But tonight, tonight, I made an exception. I'm giving him a bottle of wine, and out of respect to the chambers, I have it in a safe place, and he will have it before the end of the day. And finally, I'd like to have, with your permission, Mayor, have Ted come up, come up, please. The last time he came to my house, he came very proud, and he said, Rick, I got something for you, and he pulled it out of the bag, and guess what it was? A Nebraska hat. Come on over here. And so I wore it proudly, and we watched the game as we usually did, and tonight, as a sign of parting, I'm going to give him a white hat that says soldiers of USC. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to be a little bit non-serious towards the end. I meant every word that I said to you, and I wish you, Ted, and Alice the very best of luck and positive health for the many years to come.
Thank you both very much. All right, I've got to say a few things, even though I'm not happy he's leaving. I'm excited for his next challenge, and he's done such a great job for us. Ted and Alice have been a great part of our community as well. Ted, as we heard, has been with us since 2002. He has also helped numerous other efforts outside of our community, working with the Arizona Supreme Court and training new judges and serving on Magistrates Association, and you can imagine how much those organizations have benefited from Judge Armbruster's presence with them and leadership. I know, probably met Judge, Coach Armbruster through, probably more through him being a coach at youth basketball games, so, you know, he's been a coach for years throughout our Parks and Recreation Program, assisting the youth in our community and being a great mentor for them as well on the court and teaching them sportsmanship, and also, he's been a mentor at the middle school, serving on the Fountain Hills Mentor Program. Of course, it goes without saying, some of his greatest work's been done in establishing the teen court here in Fountain Hills, and what can you say about teen court? It's an amazing program where the youth are literally the peers, making judgments on the other youths in a real serious court, being judged by their peers, and it's worked so well, and I'm sure it's being emulated throughout the state of Arizona and other places as well. Alice and he are also working with home-delivered meals, and he's probably done that for years as we have, and so they're just all over the community, and they've been a great part of our town. And as far as the court goes, they've developed a tremendous staff there and just an awesome municipal court. You never really hear of any issues, you just hear of improvements. He's brought in grants that have helped the bottom line, and he's been always tough but fair, and he's just been a tremendous judge. When he forwarded his resignation to us, letting us know he's been appointed to, as a federal administrative law judge for the Social Security Administration, I just replied back, stating that he's been nothing short of spectacular as a municipal judge, and as a citizen in Fountain Hills, he and Alice have always been involved with gracious giving and caring hearts. There's no doubt we'll miss you terribly, but we also share in your excitement for this new opportunity and challenge to further serve as an appointed federal administrative law judge. And we have something for you, so if you wouldn't mind, Judge, coming forward? Thank you very much, Deb. All right. Put this microphone on yet? First item is kind of more of official, nice plaque for you, and the gavel is glued down here so you can't do any damage with it. But it says, presented to Judge Ted Armbruster in appreciation for eight years of service as presiding judge of the Fountain Hills Municipal Court, July 2002 to September 2010. And what else can we say? We're so appreciative of what you've done for us and our community, and we wish you Also, to wrap up on a little more of a light tone, the staff tells me that you scour Town Hall for chocolates. So they wanted to get you a little chocolate bar to make sure you could make your way to your next stop. And then also, I've got to, I'd like to get your autograph before you go on my wall here. But let's get a picture with Bob, if you don't mind. An even lighter note. I didn't know you had experience back in the 1800s. Where'd that come from? That's terrific.
Chief.
Yeah, chief. Chief?
Judge.
Judge, there you are. Anything you'd like to say?
I sure do. First of all, I had a terrific opportunity to address my colleagues in Town Hall the other day over the community center, and just as an acknowledgement of my appreciation for my court staff, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit more here in a second, I noted that I've always appreciated their respect for the court as well as the role of a judge, and I came to learn that they also had a respect for the important history of the judiciary, recognizing our roots in English judicial system. For a gift, not too long ago, I received from them a powdered wig, and as an acknowledgement of that, I wore it for the first and only time the other day. Anyway, I appreciated that opportunity to be with my colleagues in Town Hall the other day. First of all, just to this group here, individually and collectively, I want to thank you for your support of me and of the Fountain Hills Court here over the time that you've served our community. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank again all my wonderful colleagues in Town Hall that I had the chance to visit with the other day. I also want to acknowledge the terrific adult volunteers and teen volunteers that I've had the pleasure of working with in our teen court, a couple of them here tonight, Terry Zimmerman and Joe Nelson, and I'm real confident with the support that we've had from all of you here and in the community, that the teen court will continue to thrive and serve this great town as it has, and I thank you for your wonderful support that way. I also want to, obviously, I need to acknowledge, as Jay already did, the terrific court staff that I've had the honor of working with for the last eight years, Pat Dunn, Don Hernandez, Nan Norton, and Robin Becker, they are truly the heart and soul of the Fountain Hills Court, and it has been an honor to have them as my colleagues. And the court will be in good hands because of them, whoever it is that is my successor, and he or she will be honored to work with them as well. And then last, well, I want to say too, I almost forgot, although it's words that he's probably been using much more often than I will tonight, I want to thank John for his vote eight years ago, when I was first appointed.
I voted no.
Rumor was it was unanimous. And I want to thank Rick Melendez, too, my good friend, for all his support over the years. And then last, I just want to say, any good opportunities I've had in my life, and the good ones that I will have, such as this one, has been largely because of my companion and best friend, my wife, Alice, and I'm very grateful for her support, and so I want to just acknowledge her. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
more than anything was, and so many people have come forward, saying, you've got to get someone just like Ted. And it's like, he has been so effective, and as I mentioned, so caring and fair, but I think that says a lot when the people out there that he's probably thrown in a slammer, no. The people out there that he's served in our community have a lot of respect for him. And now we get to recognize some town employees for tremendous customer service. I know you're not all here, but I wanted to recognize you in public here, and thank you because Fountain, Town of Fountain Hills really focuses on customer service to our community, and we wanted to point out a few exemplary efforts to do just that. Tonight, I want to recognize Mike Chikaron, Jim Michelock, Randy Harrell, Ken Perth, Heather Ware, and Justin Woldy for their superior customer service, and I just want to point out a couple of items that have, beyond, including the customer service aspects that have been just tremendous, and just to pick one, Mike Chikaron of late has saved us thousands of dollars when most needed through a variety of innovative moves, including moving our web hosting in-house, saving us $5,000 annually, taking initiative to change email services, and other techie items that just saved us well over $10,000. So we thank you very much. Of course, Heather Ware, most people know Heather from dealing with 750 individual volunteers in our community, and in particular, the Give a Lift program, she's just been dynamite in helping to support, and I know that one's gotten legs all of itself because of the tremendous volunteer efforts, but Heather does an amazing job juggling all the amazing talents of our residents here and getting them plugged into where they can be most effective. And then Randy Harrell here, he's been tremendously helpful with his excellent service provided the town past couple of months during a major road construction project here on Shea Boulevard, and as a result, it has progressed rather smoothly considering the scope and project, and also limited control since it was an A dot project, but he's done a tremendous job to make sure it's coming together very well and looks great, and he's done it with tremendous customer service. And Mr. Michelock, Jim, who works on the traffic signals and such, has also provided excellent service over the last few months, and his work on Shea Boulevard has progressed rather smoothly, and has helped us to make some improvements in that area to leverage that improvement along Shea Boulevard as well, which will benefit us for years to come. And finally, Justin Woldy, I wanted to point out that he's alerted finance staff of lost revenues due to lack of consistent processes. These efforts have led to the collection of over $170,000 in revenue over the past couple of years, assisting in the process with blue steak reports, overseeing the Del Combre Drainage and Sidewalk Project, which was a challenge, but it looks terrific, I saw it again tonight, working with SRP, and again, just dynamic customer service, which is really the key to what makes a small town tick. And if any of you are here, please come on forward, and I'd like to thank you personally.
Way back.
Hey, Mike's in the back. Mike, can you come up for a second for a picture? He's taking his headset off. Jet 11 may go off the air for just a moment.
Oh, here he comes.
Here he comes, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Get a picture here real quick, Mike. Thank you from the Town of Fountain Hills, all of our businesses and the residents that you guys serve. Thank you for a great service. I hadn't choreographed this, so here I am in front of the council the whole night here. The next item is to recognize a couple of folks that've done yeoman's work as volunteers on our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission that are leaving us, letting some new blood come in and take over. They've got us through a redo of the strategic plan after several years, a great effort as well as so many other projects. Let me just share here, we'd like to recognize Charlotte McCleskey and Alan Siebel for their service as commissioners on the Strategic Plan Advisory Commission during the terms. The strategic plan was updated, was accomplished, and that process involved over 80 meetings and an estimated 1,500 volunteer hours, and involved engaging and receiving feedback from well over 2,000 volunteers and communications of over 20,000 people. The entire process came up at a total cost of $568, which was 97% under the budget. The Town of Fountain Hills is grateful for Charlotte and Alan, as well as to the entire commission for the dedication to the strategic planning in town. Charlotte has been involved in the town's strategic planning since 2004, when she participated in the technical advisory committee, and provided communication services during the creation of the town's first strategic plan. After adoption of the first strategic plan in 2005, she was involved in the communication efforts in conjunction with the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. She was appointed as a SPAC member in March 2008. Alan has also worked as a commissioner in the SPAC in March of 2008. He worked also diligently in his course of his term toward the adoption of strategic plan in 2010 by the town council on May 20th of this year. So, please come forward, you two. We've got something for you and all your hard work. Thank you both very much. We've got something for you. We are Charlotte, Alan. We appreciate the various time you've served, but generally recognize you for serving on our Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. We are all very thankful for the time and dedication and care you've given that entire process, a very important job you've had. Thanks for stepping up. Really didn't choreograph that well. All right, now we're getting to the meeting itself. Call to the public, any speaker cards tonight?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda, and request a motion to approve as listed items 1 through 5.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you very much. Item number six, the regular agenda, consideration of ordinance 10-03, amending the Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter 5, Municipal Court, relating to home detention and monitoring. I think we lost our judge. He is gone. He is out the door. Rick, if you'd like, or would you like me to go over the report?
Yes, I'll do my very best. In fact, the version I'll give you is probably what, very close to what Ted has downloaded to me before regarding this. As you know, when somebody is taken into custody and they're booked, and we need to pay a certain amount of those costs associated with incarceration. And I don't remember the exact cost, but I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about, I think it's a couple of hundred dollars for the first day, and then it's about $70 every day thereafter. And so, incarceration can be quite a costly proposition. And besides describing that incarceration is a costly proposition, I'll then turn some time over to Ted to explain to you an alternative to this. And Judge, if, yeah.
Welcome.
You're on.
Is it Judge Armbruster, is that?
Yeah. And Judge, I had described the costs associated with incarceration currently without this alternative. My apologies for the interruption.
Oh, no, I should have gone to the other item and let you say goodbye to your friend.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, council, this is an opportunity, a last opportunity for me, by the way, and I'm very grateful for this chance before leaving, to respectfully request consideration of the ordinance 10-03, amending our Chapter 5 of our town code relating to home detention and monitoring. And I want to first thank a couple people who have made major contributions to getting us to this point. First of all, to Mr. McGuire and Ms. Corn for their great support and input in drafting this ordinance, and also to Pat Dunn, our outstanding court administrator, for the wisdom of her experience in reviewing everything that we put together for this opportunity. And I'm very grateful for Pat's support. Also, to the town's fine prosecutor, Mark Yacovino. Mark, of course, also took the time to review and provide his input and suggestions when we were putting this together. And also to Kristen White, as the defense perspective. Kristen is one of our outstanding public defenders that serves our community, and we had the benefit of her thoughts and support as well. And then I also want to thank Councilmember Elke for his helpful information and input from other jurisdictions that we had the opportunity to review when we were going through this process. So, thank you much for that contribution. The statute, I'm not going to read through the information that I provided to you, you had the opportunity to review that. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, if I can. And I'll tell you what's, I don't think awkward's the word, but I think I have to be candid with you that there's something a bit unusual about this opportunity, because I'm presenting to you something that's been the collective effort of a number of people. And with my leaving, the benefit of it is going to be enjoyed by my successor and his or her view of how to best implement it. And so, in one sense, I'm thankful for this opportunity, but I regret a little bit that I'm not going to have the opportunity to actually work with it, because it will truly be a good thing. I think, in fact, I think it was, I just recalled, I think it was Councilmember Elke who used the expression, "It's just, it will be another tool in a judge's tool chest of making thoughtful and appropriate decisions as a part of sentencing." And I truly believe it will be for my successor. The statute that we talk about does give the town the opportunity to give the judge this authority. And the benefits that I laid out, that we collectively laid out for your consideration, I think are very clear in terms of the potential benefit to the town and to the people that sentencing impacts. And I'm confident that the information that we provided communicates that to you. I would want to make one comment regarding, and I apologize, I didn't catch everything that Mr. Davis shared with you about incarceration costs, but I will just tell you that that's the one thing, that's the common thread when you talk to any of the other communities or jurisdictions that have had home detention over the last few years. And I'll mention them in a second, because I was fortunate, I was able to contact either each presiding judge or court administrator from every one of the jurisdictions that were referenced in the material that you were provided, so I can share with you what their take and perspective was on their individual experiences. And I will tell you, it was good. It was unanimously good, very positive. But the, for the fiscal year this last year, I don't know if, Mr. Davis, did you share any of the information about jail costs? Only, I believe it's in the neighborhood of about $200 when first booked in, and about $70 thereafter for every day. But effective July 1 of this year, it's now $188 for the first day, they call it the booking day, and $74 for each day thereafter. And our court, our community, this last fiscal year, we incurred about $81,000 in total jail costs. And it's important to know that amount, approximately half of that is an amount that can actually be collected from a defendant. And we speak to that in the supporting materials that you received. But I just wanted to emphasize that that total amount is not necessarily collectible from a defendant. That half that is, is as to defendants that have been under sentence, that have actually been sentenced by the court to jail time. The other portion reflects the amount post-arrest, prior to anyone, pre-adjudication, as they call it, before there's any been a determination of guilt or not being guilty, and then the sentence in the event that they were adjudged guilty on a charge. And so, I wanted to emphasize that. And the information that we provided you not too long ago about the case processing and collection of information for the court, I think it included information on the collection of jail costs. And this is just an example for this last year, for the fiscal year, about half of that amount had already been collected from defendants. And it's important to understand, too, that that's not something that always happens or automatically happens. That's a challenge of any effective collected, collection, or enforcement measures by a court, particularly during these tough times. But again, you've got just a first-rate court staff that will be continuing. And I can assure you with confidence that they do what they can do, what anyone can do, to seek appropriate collection, even under circumstances involving jail costs. But the statute permits, in appropriate circumstances, an individual who is indigent or unable to pay to not be responsible for jail costs. But I just note that it's important to understand that of that total that's assessed against the community, not all can be sought for reimbursement from a responsible defendant. So, one of the pluses is the opportunity that you have through home detention. And it's important to also understand that that's not something that's being done or being requested out of some view of the appropriateness of the current sentencing laws in Arizona. If anything, it's to the contrary. This is, as you have learned, this is a legislatively authorized alternative to jail in appropriate circumstances. And that's the authority you're giving the judge to use his or her wisdom in applying it only in those specified circumstances. And as you also have learned from the material, there are certain cases where it cannot be ordered. But certainly, it is appropriate in cases that your judge will decide. And as I had mentioned earlier, the other communities that I've contacted, including Scottsdale, which, they have a target date, by the way, of October 1st to implement their new home detention program, Mesa, who's had theirs for four years, Phoenix for two, Goodyear was just this last year, Tempe in 2008, Chandler was actually the first a few years ago to implement home detention. Surprise is a fairly new jurisdiction to add home detention. Wickenburg also started recently, as did Paradise Valley. And I will tell you that the response from all of them was very, very good, that they have been not only very pleased with the application of the opportunity in appropriate circumstances, but also with the compliance of the defendants who have been given that opportunity in those circumstances. And they also have shared with us, which will be very helpful, their experience pro and con with the various vendors that are available in the community. And that'll be a big part, and I think a good part of the opportunity for the judge that will be following me. Because, as it should be, they'll have the chance to make the decisions as to the forms and the processes to implement for home detention. They'll have the opportunity to decide what the program requirements should be. They'll have the chance to review the various vendors, some of which we're already familiar with, because we use two that now have home detention services available. But I think it's right and good that the new judge will be the one who will be able to make the decisions on how to best implement this program. So, timing-wise, I'm thankful for that. And I very respectfully ask for your approval of this request. I think it would be a good thing for the Town of Fountain Hills for the reasons that are laid out in the benefit statement that I provided you. And I thank you for this last opportunity to address you as your judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Council, can we get a motion to move to approve ordinance 10-03?
Oh, moved.
Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
Any discussion on this item?
Great staff report.
I'm sorry?
Great staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Leger?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge. And once again, thanks for serving. We're obviously going to miss you, and I'm going to be missing an opportunity to catch up with you. You may recall U of A in Nebraska last year.
I think we'll stay in touch about that.
Hopefully, we have a rematch.
As I will with a couple other football fans here.
As Councilwoman Hanson mentioned, excellent staff report. The public hasn't had the benefit of reading the staff report, and I'm very comfortable with it. So, I just want to address something that hopefully you can respond to for the benefit of the public, which is, when you talk about home detention and monitoring, sometimes that raises eyebrows of people in certain neighborhoods. What will the court do? What does the court do to minimize or mitigate risk to the community? I.e., what type of offenders can take advantage of home detention, and what type of offenders cannot take advantage of that? And I realize that's in your staff report, but once again, for the benefit of the public, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, I think first and foremost, the best thing to respond to is the person who is not eligible for home detention as a matter of the code provision itself. A person, adult or juvenile, is not eligible for home detention in subsection 5-7-1A1 if any of the following apply. The person constitutes a risk to himself or others of the community. B, the person has a past history of violent behavior. C, the conviction for which a person is being sentenced is a domestic violence offense pursuant to the stated statute. D, the conviction for which the person is being sentenced is an act of prostitution or solicitation pursuant to the statute quoted, or the person is not eligible otherwise pursuant to Arizona revised statute as amended. And I think it's those first sections that speak to your concern, that that's, and that's a responsibility of the judge to make that determination. And, you know, I have to be confident that they will take that charge very seriously. Certainly, that will include the opportunity for the input. And I would expect the request for the input from both sides, whether that be the prosecutor representing the state or the town. And if defense counsel is available, they'll have the benefit of that information, too. Certainly, the other aspect of that, Councilmember Leger, and Mayor and Council, is that the vendor who will be responsible for actually administering the program will be instrumental in keeping the court apprised of any problems that there may be. I can tell you that the primary vendors that are used among those jurisdictions that I mentioned earlier, they have the ability to do daily reporting to the court regarding compliance, whether it's as to the location monitoring alone through GPS, or if it's an individual who also has the related alcohol monitoring, that's a very important part of it for DUI cases. So, I think just by the very nature of the requirements that are stated in the ordinance itself, and the confidence that I think I can share with you that I would have in a successor, and with the terrific court staff that will help him or her monitor it and implement the program, and the commitment and the support of this program by your prosecutor, I'm really comfortable with that not being a concern for the community.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. There's a lot of other thoughtful things here that make a lot of sense. The charging of the device themselves to the person that's going to be utilizing them is one that caught my attention.
Mayor Schlum and Council, without question, that's a major plus, because not only is that significant in terms of avoiding any related jail costs that would otherwise be incurred, but the town is not responsible for seeking reimbursement or collecting for any of the costs related to the program. That's the responsibility of the vendor. And the other cost, I guess, that has to be taken in consideration there, too, is that the freed-up court staff time of not having to deal with seeking out the collection as they ordinarily would do for fines and fees that are assessed in otherwise responsible, the responsibility of the court. So, that's... So that's, thanks for mentioning that. That's a very big plus.
And they can lose the privilege of having that if they don't, if they leave or if they don't follow all the court-ordered programs they're supposed to be a part of, or they're not where they're not supposed to be, they can lose the privilege of having that and then perhaps be sent to jail.
That's right. Mayor Schlum, Counsel, thanks for mentioning that, too, because that's something else that would be, should be of some comfort to the community, that they know that. And that was certainly something that was shared by my colleagues in the other jurisdiction, that that became very apparent, that these defendants are well aware that if they mess up while they're on home detention, what the consequences are, not just the substantial difference in the costs, but the realization that there will be a loss of liberty from what they were given as a privilege as an alternative. So it's, thanks for mentioning that, too.
Anything else, Counsel? Well, the community's going to miss you greatly, and you're going to benefit wherever community you end up serving in, outside of the court work, I'm certain they're going to benefit tremendously by you and Alice being a part of the community. And of course, the Social Security Administration is going to benefit from you being an administrative law judge for them. So thank you, Judge Armbruster.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Counsel.
All right, motion and second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you. All right, next item is consideration of Resolution 2010-30 intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalks to the middle school project S 6,006 for $354,200 in federal aid funding, plus $151,800 in town funding. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Need to get rid of the picture of Judge Armbruster in the wig first. And Bev, I may need some help on this. Just X out of it. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. In 2004, the town applied for and was selected for federal aid funding for sidewalks along Fountain Hills Boulevard at the north end of town, leading to the middle school. As you can see in the photo there, the yellow are the segments of sidewalks that would be constructed. Basically, at the completion of this project, although you see some gaps in it where the existing sidewalks, there will be sidewalks on the east side of Fountain Hills Boulevard from Fayette up to the middle school, and on the west side of Fountain Hills Boulevard from Oxford Drive to the middle school. The sidewalks north of Saguaro Boulevard will be eight feet wide in that more multifamily and commercial and school traffic area, and south of Saguaro Boulevard will be six feet Addition to the sidewalks in this segment, we will also put in two three-inch PVC traffic signal conduits for use in either a future traffic signal or in the traffic signal interconnect work. Sidewalk, as many of our sidewalks do, will be able to meander away from the curb where it's topographically feasible. And where we have a, have meandered away from the curb, we'll have a four-inch PVC conduit so that each of the property owners can provide irrigation or onsite electrical to that area between the sidewalk and the curb. The traffic control drawings for this project show the work basically going from south to north and only on one side of the street at a time. The federal aid funds are $354,000. The town funds that will be required to deposit are $151,000, although based on our current estimate, it appears that we may get a significant part of that back at the end of the project. Staff does recommend approval of this item and be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you very much, Randy. Want to get a motion on this item?
May I?
Councilmember Dickey?
May I read it?
Yeah.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 2010-30 intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA/JPA 10124-1 for the Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalks to the middle school project.
And a second?
Second.
All right, anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, any discussion on this? Councilmember Elke?
Good evening. You mentioned that we may get considerable amount of that money back. Can you explain just for public purpose how we may be getting some of that money back, those monies back?
Mayor, Councilman Elke, if the, you know, we're in a time when construction bids are coming in very good, and so if the total project costs come in less than the funding that's in there, we would get some funding back. Actually, probably the first sixty, you know, if it comes in $60,000, we'll get all of it back, and then below that, we'll get a portion of it. So that's how it would work.
Good. That's terrific, and hopefully we'll continue to get those good bids in that we've been benefiting from and continue to improve other areas with those dollars. And I appreciate you working with, or having top of mind that the schools in session and you're going to work with that at downtimes in that area. So I think this'll make it much safer and a lot, as you mentioned in your staff report, connect to the other sidewalks that have been installed to get to the other schools and other neighborhoods.
We'll work with ADOT on the timing, but I won't guarantee anything on that.
Had said you guaranteed in your staff report. Thank you, Randy. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you. Counsel, discussion direction to the town manager. Do we give the town manager any items for follow-ups tonight? I don't believe so. Number nine, summary of the council requests. Report on recent activities, anything, Rick?
Just to report, had a very successful week conference. I emailed some of you some of the results of that or the sessions that I was able to attend. These included a session on sustainability, not just environmental, but sustainability's also a term that's often referred to, fiscal condition of the town, organizational viability of the town, and very good panel discussion and information about how some of the other cities and towns are handling the current economic situation. And I was happy that we were in good company with quite a few cities who are now moving to do some of the things that we seem fit to do in the last six months. So that was good. Also, some information about FACNET, which is the State of Arizona County's Communication Network. And this is hopefully an investment on the part of the state to expand the bandwidth of communications, computer communications, creating a safe environment for jurisdictions to share information. And if you want to know a little bit more about that, go with me after. And also a session on creating vibrant city environments. All of that, all, including keynote addresses, I thought were very informative and appreciate the opportunity to attend that. That was very valuable. I had a, I think I actually got to attend the ULI panel discussion via computer because I didn't want to infect anybody, but I was there watching that, and I found that discussion to be very valuable as well, validated, I think, a lot of the things, the directions that we've been moving in, and also gave us quite a few things to think about in the future. And so I thought that was a very good exercise and grateful that we were able to succeed in convincing them to come out to Fountain Hills. So other than that, appreciate the opportunity to report.
Good. Thank you very much. On the consent agenda, we did approve some special use permits, or special event applications for Oktoberfest, so that's upcoming, September 24th through 25th. Don't write, Ms. Colley?
Yes.
And September 24th through 25th, Oktoberfest returns here to the fountain. And now, if we are able to adjourn, we'll head over to the Fountain Hills High School Falcons' first home football game, already in progress. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think it's because of that.